No, I got the... It didn't change, right? That's right. Thank you.
Join us all, students. Now, if you'd join me for the pledge allegiance... My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome. Good evening, everybody. Go ahead and get started. I need a motion to approve. The agenda is presented.
So moved.
A second. All those in favor, she can have a say.
Aye.
Aye. Transposed. Agenda approved. Action items out of closed session. July 26. Anybody got any problem with that or anything needs to be changed? If not, a motion to approve is presented.
So moved.
Second.
A second. Ashley, please.
Brewer?
Yes.
Duryrush?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Dravich?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Moving on, communications. We got some high school speech stuff that...
I know, we've had some great stuff to go.
Yeah, and so Coach Carter here is gonna take the lead on this.
It is my pleasure to let the community know what our speech team did this past year. We had people advance debate events to low ends in group interpretation. And back in March, we had an individual, Anna Broadboks, who had qualified for the National Speech Debate Tournament in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. And she was able to honor her school as a congressional debate competitor, as a senator. And she was able to compete against the nation. And that also allowed Athena Try to compete in world debate for us. And while we did not advance to the finals in that, in their consolation and supplemental events, in verse reading or poetry, they advanced all the way to the top 38 percent of the nation as they kept advancing. And then storytelling, Athena Try advanced all the way up until the top 18 into the semifinal rounds against other states that have it as an actual event. We don't have it in the event in Illinois, but we are just that good. And she advanced all the way to the semifinals, and she placed in the top 7 percent of the nation by being top 18 out of 262. I just found out today that there were a total of 8,000 competitors at the national tournament from all the different states in U.S. territories. So I think you guys can be proud of what these two young ladies have done and represented of this past summer in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I know our principal is very proud of that because it's all old sounding grounds kind of stuff. But it was a great experience, and what I'd like you guys to do is to see some of the plaques that they have done. I want to honor them just because I feel like they have honored and represented Ball Chatham exceptionally well. Anna Broadboks, Athena Try. They could, just going through some of it right now. They have about a minute.
We'll just call it an approv, too.
I know you don't need any of the books.
No, thank you, guys, very much. You did a great job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Please support.
And you're welcome to stay. Thanks, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
We also got some good news coming out of our food service. GMS, did they get some... Director receives a grant?
Oh.
Chad, anything?
It's all in food, and you're all not doing it.
So we applied for a Dollars for Dairy Grant. It was a $2,000 grant. And basically what it is, it's designed to help us... What they wanted to do is they want us to increase dairy participation, milk, yogurt, cheese, items like that. So we ended up purchasing two single-door merchandising coolers that are placed in two different areas of the food service area. Spent the full $2,000. We had to pay a little bit more out of the budget to cover some of the shipping and additional costs. But it's gonna... It really presents well. They're already installed and ready to go. Previously, we were using some of the older Prairie Farms coolers that didn't present product very well and wasn't very inviting to the kids. And Sabrina Henderson, our food service manager there now, she says the kids are liking it quite a bit, and they're getting a little system down where they get the kids to pay attention a little bit more. So it's a little more like a fancier presentation. So I think it'll help out quite a bit.
All right, great. And was that grant? Did you say that was through Prairie Farm?
Dollars for Dairy Grant. It was through the St. Louis Dairy Council.
St. Louis Dairy Council. Okay, thanks. 4-3, we got an annual report. Betsy?
Hello, hello.
Hi.
I'll wait till Ashley switches it over, but until that time, I have a fun fact about communication. Of course, with our Facebook, it gives us a lot of analytics. And a lot of what you'll see in my report are analytics. It looks like the United States is certainly the number-one user for Facebook, for our account, but number-two is India, just so you know.
I think India is first.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, of all the countries in the world, it's the United States and then India. So what I'll start with tonight...
Serene has a lot of family.
Yeah, well, absolutely. We'll talk first about communications and why it's important. Well, not only is it a board goal, but in my opinion, public schools are the lifeblood of our communities. Really, I make no joke, but I think people move to our community for our schools. I don't think it's for the great architecture of our community or a lot of the other... There are a lot of amenities, but I think probably people move here first and foremost for our schools. And I think it's important that we involve and continue to talk with our community, our parents, and keep them involved in everything that's happening in our schools. They're our taxpayers. They're the ones who are supporting us. So absolutely, communication is important. We do this in a number of ways, from our websites and our app. And here's some statistics for you from the past year. You'll notice there's district news on the front page, and it goes to every single one of our school sites, but there's also school news on every school site. So looking back at last year, all six school sites have averaged 78 articles per school. We had over 170,000 users, and our pages were viewed 1.49 million times, which seems crazy. And probably I attribute half of it to me when I have to update all the sites, but anytime you're on your phone or any page you switch to, it counts it. So to me, it seems like an awful lot, but... And of course, August 15th last year was the largest number, but that was the start of school. But everybody was on there looking for the menus or whatever, you know? So, yeah, 10,770 views on that one day. Our app, it looks like the iOS number of downloads was 5,430, and for Android, 1,110. Our app is under revision right now. It should be up and running, and well, the old one is still running, but the new app will be presented probably in the next month. What's cool about the new app is that I get to be able to change some of the things on there. Right now, if menus change or whatnot, I have to go through the developer and wait for them to make the changes. And it... There's some lifetime, so it'll be better. Social media. As you know, we have Facebook, we have Twitter, we have YouTube, we have LinkedIn. Facebook, I have 3,366 followers with the largest number of views of 30,300 on January 23rd. 1,538 Twitter followers. YouTube, largest number of views in one particular day or week was 219 for Ball Elementary students singing "We Are Titans." And LinkedIn, we're just sort of using that more and more for recruitment purposes than anything at this point. Of course, we do our email, phone, texts through School Messenger, and I thought this was pretty cool. So we have a 92% deliverable rate. You know, it reaches 92% of our parents. But then I just started to look at the analytics that they provide on, well, what about the e-Bulletin? What about those newsletters? Who's looking at those? Is anybody looking at those? And so I averaged all the e-Bulletins that were emailed out last year, and it was a 56% open rate, which is huge when the industry standard is around 23%. So our parents are really into what is happening in our schools. That's what that tells me. Of course, whenever we send out emergency messages, the open rate is 75%. You would still think it would be more around 92%, but 75% is pretty big. So we do use School Messenger, as you know, through any crisis communication, but also just, hey, what's in virtual backpack, or here's the next newsletter. So we use it pretty extensively, 104 times last year. Newsletters, speaking of newsletters. So I created newsletters for all of our schools and our district, and there were 36 school newsletters with seven e-Bulletins that I was able to create with the help of teachers and administrators, getting the word out. Local media log, again, more stories covered last year in 2017, '18 than in the previous year, which is, to me, sort of amazing because the SJR's really cut back on their staff. We don't have a dedicated education reporter anymore. And so, anyway, 27 stories were from WICS, 15 from the State General Register, and two from WCIA. None of this includes the Chatham Clarion, because, you know, gosh, I would be doing... That would be an immense amount of work that Joe does, and I so appreciate it because he covers things that I can't always be at. So he is all about Chatham, and I really do appreciate him. Another thing that I do, and when we talk about PR or communication, there's always that reactive communication, but there's also proactive. Proactive is when you see that there's something that's going to be happening, and we try to strategize and then launch some sort of a media campaign to help promote it, and then we recap it. So last year, if you look at the eclipse, that was a big thing going on. It hit us really early on in the school year. But as administrators, we all meet, we talk about it. How are we gonna reach our parents so they know what's going on? How can we get these permission slip signs so everybody knows? And so there's a lot of work behind the scenes, I guess. And then it's all about promoting it and then doing a recap, and this sort of takes you chronologically through that process. But then there's what I call reactive, which isn't really all that reactive because you plan for these things all the time, but it's whenever there's a bomb threat or, you know, some sort of a threat that we have to alert our parents about. There are things that... That happens so much more quickly. You don't have... You try to prepare through, oh, you know, templates and messages, but really, it's about working with our administrators and our director of safety and security and making sure that what he tells me is legally, we can say that we don't mess up an investigation, and then... But yet, trying to get everybody, all of our stakeholders alerted, because there's a hierarchy to that, too. You always want our staff to know first what's going on because they'll be asked. You want parents to know. I mean, and all this happens almost simultaneously, within minutes. You know, it's staff, it's parents, it's the rest of the community, it's media, it's social media. And you try to have to do that because, you know, you don't want... You know, kids have phones. You know they're gonna be texting their parents, so they need to know right away what's going on. But you can't incite a panic. You have to be, you know, you have to let the police do their job. And so it's sort of a balance, but you do try to plan, you try to do what you can to make it, you know, so that the parents understand not to panic and that we have this. So there's that type, I guess, as well. I also offer creative support to different organizations, such as the foundation or the PTOs or Titan Fuel. And I get to take part in the FOIA administration, which is the best part of my job. And then, okay, and then one of the things I re-instituted this year, it was one of my goals that I used to have, is a cadre of volunteers, my key communicators. They are friends, I consider them friends, but they're also people and staff members who help me because I'm the only one in my department. So they tell me things to think about before launching a message or help me even in, you know, writing, not really writing a message, but giving me suggestions on how this might be perceived, what to consider before we send it out. They were really instrumental on some of the things going on last year, last fall, regarding the elementary PTO, former executive director there, and they also make me laugh in times that I really needed a good laugh. So they are really great. The staff, almost every one of us who is employed by Ball Chatham is a key communicator because in our community, if they know you work at Ball Chatham, they're gonna ask you, what's going on? What was that? What was that about? You know? And we need to be able to internally communicate with our staff, and I think our principals do a great job of that. But it's always so important because, of course, our teachers are... Everybody who works here gets asked what they want people want to know, what's going on? And so, you know, internal communications is really, to me, just as important as external. I have different staff members, and really, it's the middle school that I really have to, like, give a hand to. A lot of the teachers at the middle school will text me or they'll email me different things that are happening right then in their classroom, so I can help promote it. It's the positive things. Because I can't be everywhere at once, and even if I were alerted to it and I drove over there, it'd be over by the time they thought to, you know, send it. So they just send it to me, and they will CC the principal, and it gets out on the website and social media, and a lot of times, the media will pick it up. So it's good. And this past summer, I've been working pretty extensively on a revamped crisis communication guide with Randy, and I know the principals have started to look it over. It's pretty extensive. It has a lot of templates, what to do in the event of an emergency, depending, I mean, from biological-type incidents to threats to whatever, weather emergencies, train derailments, everything you can think of. They're like preset messages that you can kind of, you know, modify to fit the need. And there's also information for parents in there about reunification procedures. We need to get that out to our parents because a lot of them don't understand, you know, what we learned last year. Well, why are the high schoolers going to GES, you know, for an evacuation? Well, what are the procedures? What's happening? We need to do a better job of letting our parents know what those procedures are and when they're used and when they're not. So, and a lot of these are kind of dependent on the situation, I know, but I think that that's something that can go out in the full newsletters for our parents. So that's what I've got. Do you have any questions for me?
Any comments? Questions for Betsy?
You know I do, Betsy.
Like that?
You know I do.
Do it. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. This is... You do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
It's come a long ways. And the world's changing, so I had a couple of questions around the social media piece. It sounds like you're already on it, like crisis management, you're wanting to go on offense, and that was the question I had written down, was how on some of these topics can we go on offense, but still let know people... Like, I like community feedback.
Mm-hmm.
We've got a lot of professional, intelligent people in Chatham, so I want to hear what they have to say, but yet not open up a can of worms where they think they're running... You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So how do we... How do we take some... Because we're thinking about doing some pretty major changes in some things as a board. How do we put... Is there a way we can have a, like, a Facebook page with its title, "Here's what we're thinking"?
You could.
I don't know.
You could. Or do you... Are you looking at doing your own Facebook page for the board or maybe frequently ask questions?
Are you talking?
Do you already have it up and running, and I need to follow it?
We don't need any Dwayne selfies posted.
Jesus, no.
Do you know what? It's one of those things that I think we could really talk with our administrators about. Right now, if there's topics that come up that people post on our Facebook pages, and Doug, you may see this, too, with your Facebook page and whatnot, I always make sure I talk with the administrator so I have the right answer before I post anything. Most recently, we've gotten questions about, well, when's pre-K screening gonna happen? And, you know, those types of things. So I just let them know. I answer them pretty quick, as quickly as I see them, once I find out for sure what the answers are. But, you know, generally, on my page, they don't go off on tangents like they would on maybe some other community pages in Chatham.
Well, so there's always the little stuff. So I think of, like, we proposed school time changes, and like, it erupted on whatever those two Chatham pages are versus six months or 12 months ahead, say, here's what we're thinking, so you can prepare your schedules, and maybe it goes over better if we do it that way.
Maybe it's not only, here's what we're thinking, but we'd like your feedback as well.
Yes.
You know, maybe they have some things that we haven't thought of.
We haven't thought of.
So absolutely, we can do that. We can also post it on our websites. There's more than just social media. There's ways that we can, you know, push out a message. And if you really wanted me to, I could contact the media to do a story on it as well. So...
Or like Dr. Wood puts out newsletters quarterly, whenever he does them. There's some pretty good meat in those. Do we just post those directly to Village Voices and Chatham Central, I think it's called?
No, I don't post those there.
Or do we? I'm just trying to think, how do we go on offense and let community know what we're doing?
You know, we email it directly to them, and we post it on our sites. As I said, there's a 56% open rate, but, you know...
But it's the people out... Like, if I didn't have children here, what I'm thinking, there's...
I'll put it on our Facebook, too.
...what 70% of the community doesn't get on our websites.
Not everybody in the community gets on our social media. It's true. They will sometimes post it on... Post things on the Chatham one, so it's something to consider.
Sometimes there's not an answer. I mean, I watch, you post a boatload of information about what's going on in this district, and then you'll see people posting like, well, when did you find that out? I didn't know that was going on, and like, they only bounced it off your head about 20 times publicly, so...
Yeah.
I mean, you do a really nice job of having it out there.
It's tough. You try to reach them in many, many ways, all different avenues, from social media to direct mail. You know, people don't receive their information or get their information all the same way. Some prefer Facebook, some prefer to get the actual official email from the district. So there's no easy answer. We try to cover them all. I don't... I don't want to necessarily incite people, but, you know, information's a good thing. We want to be able to open those lines of communication. So if it's posting something on Chatham Central or Village Voices, then it is.
So do you have analytical tools that you look at with those sites so that you can see what the traffic looks like?
Mm-hmm, yep. On Wix, they use Google Analytics, so that's where I came up with the analytics. Facebook, Twitter, they all provide analytics. Our app, the only analytic I can get from the app is just how many downloads, not necessarily what pages they hit the most or whatever, but I have a feeling it's menus. Honestly, I do. For the app. I was surprised by the number of people who've actually downloaded the app. You know, it's quite a few, quite a few more than I thought, so that's what I got. I do hope to work this year more with intergovernmental agencies like the Chatham Police. We're doing more of that, the Chatham Fire Department, Village, trying to really cross-promote when things are happening, because they do a lot of stuff with our kids as well. They do a lot of different programs, safety programs, and we need to work better, I think, with them.
Any other? And I will agree with you. I think people move here because of our school.
I do, so... It's just me. Well, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And I am gonna publicly thank Joe, because you do a... You do a great job for the...
He does.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Can we take your picture?
No. All right, moving on, 4-4. This is where anybody that has an issue about an agenda item that they want to bring to the board, they can come up and talk for a couple of minutes, five minutes most, and state their name and go to the podium. Anybody have anything they... Would you like... Is there something on the agenda you want to...
I'm Carrie Shelbyan, and I'm on the agenda.
Oh, so it's an agenda item?
As a new hire. Maybe I'm not saying it at the right time, but I just wanted to...
Okay. Did you want to address the board on... About an agenda item?
No.
No? Okay.
Introduce yourself?
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks. Which one are you?
I'm a science teacher. I teach a little science.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, then. Which one?
614.
All right. Consent and agenda items, we got 5-1 to 5-9. Anybody wish to pull any of them? If not, I need a motion.
No, I do. I want to pull 5.4.
Minutes of the finance committee meeting. Anybody else want to pull any? Okay, then I need a motion to approve, 5-1 to 5-3, and 5-5 to 5-9 is presented.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Okay. Ashley, please.
Duryrush?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Dravich?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes. Minutes from the finance committee.
I just want to point out that we had talked in the last committee meeting, and it's in the minutes, that the food service has gone from in the red to by about, what, a quarter million to... No, it was 150,000 in the red to about 130,000 in the black. And we specifically asked, does that include Chad's salary? And Charlotte confirmed that that includes, so it's official, you've paid for yourself.
So can I leave?
You can go to the Dollar for Dairy card.
It's on us. No, I just... I wanted to say thanks. It appears you've done a really good job.
Thank you. There's some really good staff at all the schools, and I just think a little bit of direction and allowing them a voice in some of the things that they wanted to do, I think it was key.
Is that it?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Ashley, please.
Brewer?
Yes.
Duryrush?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Dravich?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes. Moving on, personnel consent items, we got 6-1 to 6-31. Anybody wish to pull any of them? If not, I need a motion to approve is presented.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. Ashley, please.
Brewer?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Duryrush?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Dravich?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes. Welcome. Going forward now. Moving on, new... Let's see, old business, 7-1 Prairie Restoration at Ball Elementary. We had Brian here last week from the... I think he was with the Federation of Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah.
Presentation, 10 Acres at a Ball. We're not gonna mow it anymore other than a few paths. Is that right? And we got all kinds of teams and dollars, grant money gonna come in and plant a bunch of stuff. You go visit.
So I think it's awesome. That's something my grandparents used to do in the Decatur area, so I wasn't here for that presentation.
Oh, you weren't?
Uh-uh, but that's a pretty awesome deal. Uh-uh. But that's a pretty awesome deal.
So I had a community member ask me to ask somebody, I suppose it's Jen, specifically, do you have a plan, don't answer it tonight, like, so it's a great idea, he said, because he used to be an ag teacher, after it's grown up. So we have about three years. Or do you already have a plan, other than just letting the kids kind of run around, are there certain things that we can do to learn specific things for specific reasons? You see some heads nodding. You already working on it?
Yeah, they've already talked to us a little bit about that. The kids will be involved in the planting for, over the three-year period. So starting with our fourth graders, I believe, and then the third graders and the second grader. And they're going to take them out. They're going, they keep telling us they're going to come out and be a big part of the educational for our kids.
And I told the citizen that it appeared to me that he just volunteered to help us.
There you go.
Yeah, if you remember, Brandon, they were talking about selling that 10 acres at one point in time because it was a lot of mowing. So this would be awesome, keeping, keeping the district and making an educational piece too. So if nobody has any comments, I need a motion to approve is presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ashley, please.
Seren.
Yes.
Ravitch.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
Drew Rush.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Yes.
And Cal.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, Cal.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I interrupted her. It's my fault.
That's fine. Okay. So Ball, you got, you have some good things going to happen out there. So we're looking forward to it. Let's see, new business. We have a tentative budget for FY19. Charlotte, you got some numbers you want to show us?
I do. So all of last year, we spent the time balancing needs and resources, keeping in mind fiscal stability and responsibility. A lot of those projects listed straddled two different years. The parking lot, for example, and the bus lanes just got finished. More so, these were big-ticket items, but we also were able to do a lot of other things. The musical instruments, for example. And I neglected to put the Chatham, the Chatham Elementary School entrance in there. And so we were able to accomplish a lot and still live within our means. We added instructional coaches, a custodian, director of food service, and teachers. And the next slide, I know you're probably sick of seeing this, but you can see how the progress we're making. And so while the ed fund is still dependent on early tax dollars, we're still at a deficit, roughly $600,000. Thank goodness, transportation and operations and maintenance, they're in the black. They wouldn't have needed early tax dollars to keep functioning. So kudos to you guys. We still have a little bit of work to do in our ed fund, but we made a lot of progress last year. And that was in part due to the state of Illinois finally paying us all the money that they owed us from the previous years. We won't see that money next year, but to couple that with the fact that the state was actually timely in all their payments to us, which had never happened since I've been here. And then on June 30, they released another categorical, another surprise. We also had staff who really, for another year, they, they only got what they needed. They didn't go out and have a lot of wants. And so when you're looking at 3,500 expenditure lines, if each line comes under, they don't spend $300, that's a million dollars saved right there. We had a lot of, a lot of schools that had a lot of lines with a lot more money than that in it, and they didn't need it. They didn't spend it. So that's why we made such great strides. It's really been a team effort. And so the FY19 budget priorities is to add teachers as needed and professional development opportunities, maintain, expand successful educational programs and opportunities for the students, continue to evaluate and revise the curricula, continue to build capacity throughout the district while still maintaining that fiscal stability. So when we look at the FY19 revenues that are being projected, the EBF is the evidence-based funding formula. And I'm budgeting $7,470,000. It's 15% of the projected revenues. Of course, most of our money comes from property taxes. And I'm projecting that at $34,343,640, which is 71% of the total budget of $48,577,515. I want to say this, though. This is based on no property tax freeze. If we get a property tax freeze, this all blows up out of the water. Because right now, the Consumer Price Index is 2.1%. If you remember right, two years ago, it was at 0.7%. So when you look at 0.7, that gave us $189,000 roughly. 2.1 last year gave us over $500,000. If there's a property tax freeze, that CPI goes to zero. So we lose those dollars. On the expenditures by fund, the education fund, they're spending 70% of our resources, which is expected. Our debt service comes in at 10% of expenditures, operations and maintenance at 9%, transportation at 4%. The total projected expenditures is $50,288,453. And yeah, that's more than the revenues that are planned, but the difference is those excess bond proceeds, we're spending those down. So we're still living within our means for our revenue projection when you factor out those excess bonds. When you look at the next slide, expenditure by type, you know, our benefits and salaries, benefits are at 15%, salaries are at 51%. So that makes up 66% of our projected expenditures. The next highest category is 15%. Now, out of that 7.7 million, if you go back to the previous page on debt service, you'll see what we've got projected for debt service. That's roughly 67% of that total. The rest of that is tuition and room and board for special ed and CACC. So those are the two primary, big-ticket items for projected expenditures. When we look at the projected fund balances, I call this a break-even budget. And that's what I try to always bring to you, is a break-even budget. I'm estimating low on revenues. I'm estimating high on expenditures because I don't want this board to be surprised if I did that in reverse. I like to know that what I've got in there is affordable. And operations and maintenance, I want to call to everybody's attention, I separated those two out. I think it's important for us to keep the integrity of those excess bonds and not co-mingle that with operations and maintenance. So you'll see the excess bonds is in the negative by 1.9 million. And health, life, health and safety is negative 130,000. That's because we are spending down those fund balances. It's money we've already got. So the importance of, of the operating funds, ISB looks at these four funds as, as criteria to see the health of a district. There are formulas that they use on each of those forms to determine a financial profile. And on the next slide, you'll see where we've been. Dr. Wood and I, we've got a goal of 3.9. So we want to hit that 4, but I don't know that we'll hit the 4 next year. But I think that with the increases in fund balances, the increases of cash on hand that we've had, I didn't go to the bank and borrow this year. I, I know that our score is going to be higher than the 3.7 that's listed for 2017. So in conclusion, we need to continue the positive trajectory for the fiscal responsibility, continue to build cash to reduce dependence on early taxes, continue to recognize the need versus want. We want to get to that point where I can give you your wants. We've got a little ways left to go. And to prioritize what is deemed critical. But I think that the past year, we've made great strides. Are there any questions?
Do your, do your revenue projections include all the oncoming projects, housing projects or not, for the tax-based revenues?
What I've done is, that's tied to the levy, which of course ties into this budget. And I project $10 million every year in new property. And we've kind of been right on that every single year. But now I'm so excited that I heard that the new hotel is going up by Shields. So we might be greater than, than 10 million this year. But I don't want to ever count on somebody going out and fully developing something because who knows what the funding's going to be and fall through. And because we've been steady at the 10 million, that's a conservative number to use. I think we will hit that. That's what I used.
We've got some history shows. It used to be over $100 million in some years.
I know not that many years ago, it hit 30 million. But I'm conservative. I like to stick to, a sure thing. And 10 million, I think, is a sure thing.
I'll make a comment. The early tax money, as you all maybe know, comes in at a big lump sum. In the past decade, there hasn't been much for interest rates. And Charlotte quickly figured out that interest rates are going up and has, is now investing that money. So, you know, if inflation's 3% and we're getting 2% on the money that's laying there, at least we're trying to keep up. You know, going from zero interest to 2% gets us a teacher.
Right. Make our money work for us.
So just, she's doing some pretty good things there.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments from Charlotte? She's up here. All right, that was information only, which leads us into our next agenda item, which is we need to set a hearing date to approve that FY19 budget proposal. And that date is September 27, 2018 is at our next regular meeting. And I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Ashley.
Burr.
Yes.
Drew Rush.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Ravitch.
Yes.
Ha.
Yes. Charlotte, thanks.
Thank you.
8-3, construction update. We got a guest here tonight, Mike.
Good to see you all again. It's been a little while since I've been here. Mike asked me to come and report a little bit on construction, what's happened this summer in the district. We worked on three projects for you folks. Two own at the middle school, one at the high school. The ones at the middle school were the drive and the bus lane replacements. We, we tore up a bunch of asphalt and put down concrete, replaced a lot of sidewalks, put in some new site drainage and some other miscellaneous stuff. That project is nearly complete. By the way, all three projects have occupancy permits issued by ISB. So we can use all, they're all done enough. The only one that still has a little bit of work remaining is the middle school drive project that they're going to come back a little later in the fall, do the seeding, mulch and fertilizer so that the grass will grow a little bit better. And there's a coating that goes on top of the concrete drive surfaces so that, it's called an anti-spall coating, so that helps with road salts and stuff like that, keeps the surface from spalling. They'll do that a little bit later, too. The concrete's supposed to have 30 days, all the concrete's supposed to have 30 days worth of cure on it. We were fighting the weather a little bit this summer. You know, it's kind of touch and go sometimes, but Autobomb, who is a Morton contractor, came through for us and they got it all done. Everything's ready to go. The other project at the middle school was the replacement of the roof on the science wing, about 20,000 square feet. That project is 100% complete. It's in closeout. You know, we're waiting for some final paperwork to turn that in. We, if you recall on that project, we took two bids on that. One was to completely tear it off and replace it, all the way down to the metal deck, which is what we did. The other one was to apply a topical coating on the roof and leave basically everything that was there. They have to do some special work. But we took two prices. This coating product is a new product out there that we're starting to see a lot of. We fully expected it to be more economical than a complete tear-off. We actually added two inches of insulation in addition to replacing the three inches that were there for, I think it was around $40,000 less than the coating product. The coating product is something new. I think contractors, I don't know why, the restoration product manufacturer doesn't know why either. He's counting it as an anomaly, he calls it. We had several openings on that roof that, old fans, it was a science wing. And remember back in, it was about 14 when we replaced the mechanical system in that wing and put two large rooftop units on that roof. Those replaced a whole bunch of fans, 35 of them, that were scattered throughout that roof. We closed all those openings up. When you tear off a roof, you know, those automatically come off. I think it was more of an expense for the coating manufacturer. Same contractors involved, they both, you both. But across the board, all the prices for the tear-off was cheaper. So you were able to capitalize on that. One of the things that we did, we also were able to replace the gutters with the complete tear-off, which wasn't originally specified to be replaced, nor was it with the coating system. With the coating system, you know, consider it like it's a, it's a roof coating. It's a thickness, you know, it's maybe an eighth of an inch thick product that they put down in liquid form. But you don't have to replace the gutters when you did that. When we started tearing off, we found that the gutters that flanged up over the top of the roof were rusted. And so we went ahead and replaced them at that time. That was one of the benefits that we had with the complete tear-off, as well as we also found some perforated metal deck that we wouldn't necessarily have found with the coating process. During the coating process, we had specified that we had the roof infrared scanned. And so we knew that it was wet in some places, and we were going to have them replace the insulation in those areas. Well, in other areas, there was some perforation through the deck. So when we tore off, we were able to correct that, fix it. Yes?
When you found those wet spots, was there any mold that needed to be remedied or where?
On the roof surface, no. Didn't see anything. As a matter of fact, the deck in just, I think we added altogether two 5-foot by 10-foot pieces of galvanized metal, 22, you know, thin gauge metal that actually got screwed down over the top of the metal deck. The way that building is constructed, it's like a lot of your other building additions over the years were constructed in the district. The steel structure runs with the length of the corridor. So the metal deck that's fluted is perpendicular to that. And the structure is, is sloping on, on all those buildings. So if you can envision a leak at the top in the middle of the roof, all the water's going to run down to the edge, which is where we found the rust. So in the tear-off situation, we were able to correct, you know, some hidden conditions. So it's a, it's a plus. Plus, it was cheaper. It's a win-win. So. The, the last project that is also done is the security work at the high school. You know, we built that, some of you may have seen it. We built that little masonry surround at the security desk in there. We also added some door hardware on the inner vestibule doors. So the building is, after 8 o'clock in the morning or whenever school opens, it goes into lockdown. And you have to buzz in to the security desk or the office. All that work is done. There was some camera work related to that as well. So as I mentioned, all three of the projects are essentially complete. We're waiting for some paperwork on some of them. These three sheets that you have here are just the financials. There's three columns where we started back in April, where we, when we took bids. You can see the cost projections that we listed there. And then as of today, all projects are all within budget. You know, we haven't spent nearly the, all the contingency. The largest contingency that we spent was on the science roof replacement where we replaced those gutters. We wouldn't have, we found that when we tore it off. So it was the opportune time to do it. So budget-wise, we're in good shape. See the numbers. Any questions?
Make any questions, comments?
I just appreciate the explanation. This is good.
You're more than welcome.
All good. Mike, thank you. Good seeing you again. That was information only. Moving on, communication, 9-1.
That was.
Board meeting dates, September, October, November. We've got a special meeting in early November. Make note of on the 8.
8.
November 8, the special that?
SIP.
SIP. Okay. This time, anybody's got anything they want to bring to the board about anything? It didn't have to be on the agenda. Now's the time to do it. Step up, state your name. Nope. Everybody good? All right then. In case you guys were wondering, I did shower. She was, she's scheduled to be out of here prior to us moving meetings to Thursdays. And Dr. Wood needed to be out of town with family. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Thanks, everybody.
So too, Steve. We appreciate it.